The Commissioner's Court, Brazos County will meet regular session on July 5th, 2022, 10:00 AM in Commissioner's courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation of Pledge of Allegiance to the US Texas Flag. Commissioner Colley will lead us.
Thank you. One of my favorite scriptures says that we're to pray about everything. We're to pray in every way. This morning I invite you to take a deep breath with me. Take a deep breath and breathe in as deeply as you can the beauty of God's grace that surrounds us. I think we take it, we have that advantage, but we forget sometimes. God's grace is all around us. Bow with me. Dear God, we thank you for all of your blessings. We ask, we ask you to share with us your wisdom so we might know and follow your will and your way. Grant us more love, peace, and all of your good gifts. Fill us up with your joy. Bless us to bless others. As you taught, let us treat others as we want to be treated. Please, dear God, forgive our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Come on up, Roy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Roy Flores, 507 East 31st. After last week's meeting, I was trying to figure out a way to get, help the county get more volunteers for voting polls. And I spoke to a young man, Matty Aguilar. I'm sure some of y'all know Matty. And he came up with a fabulous idea. Said, why don't we use the kids that are asked to do community service? I mean, we have a bunch of Aggies. We have young people here that are doing community service. We could have them in three shifts. And these kids, you know, even though they made a mistake, they could actually be taught how their government works. And they can rub shoulders with, with some of the voters and commissioners and politicians that are going places. And I think this, I think that's a fabulous idea. It's, it's a positive idea. And hopefully to get some of these kids on the right track. So I would hope the Commissioners would consider doing something like that. And, and I think it would really help out because right now we have a lot of older folks, elderly, doing this, this service. And what happens is when they pass away, they take all that knowledge with them. And it's important to pass the knowledge down to the next generation. So I hope y'all keep that in mind.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
Any other citizen have some input?
Ronnie.
Ronnie Vatul.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. When I first heard about this issue about the voting polls and places, to me, I thought it was a little bit, wasn't that important? Wasn't that big a deal? Because I live out in the Curtain area. And for me, I come into, I come into town five days a week for my job. So it wasn't a difficult thing for me to go vote. But I started looking at a different perspective for people that do live out in the rural part of the county. They're either ranchers or retired people. And it is a lot more difficult for them to come in. It's, it's an effort. And I know that voting is a privilege and it's a great privilege that we should want to go vote if we have to travel 100 miles. But that's not, that's not really the reality of it. So I started looking at it from a different perspective. One, if you look at the current voting polls, places, none of them, none of them are currently located out in the northeast or the, in the rural part of the county. From Curtain to Torino Hall is about 10 miles. From northeast Brazos County is about 21 miles. What, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, so from Galilee Baptist Church to the Brazos County Election Office is about less than three miles. So we have numerous other places within the cities of Bryan and College Station for people to go vote. My proposal would be, is not open up another one. But I know there's a cost issue and there's some polling, poll worker issues. But why wouldn't, why couldn't we open up a, a, a place to vote in the Curtain area, either at Zion or the Curtain Community Center, and close the one at Arena Hall? Because again, people in, in the town area have a place, have multiple places to go vote. Well, people out in the, in the county just do not. They have to drive this distance. So when I was looking at the statistics of the March election, I noticed that the, the, the districts out in the, in the county, in the rural part of the county, had a much lower turnout than some of the inner city places did. Now, I don't know what, what the reason for that is, but talking to people out in the community, it is actually difficult for some people to go out and, and vote. Much more difficult than going into the Curtain Community Center or, or the Zion Church. But our rural communities of Curtain, Reliance, Wixson Valley, Edge, these areas are growing. And they need to have people that, in that area, come out and vote to voice their opinion. And if we do anything to discourage that by only having the closest polling place 10 miles from them, I, I just think that's not the right thing for us to be doing. So I would propose, I would ask y'all to look into using the Curtain Community Center. I've actually contacted them. They are open to that. They actually think it's a great place, would be a great place for it to happen. And so I'm gonna, I'm waiting to hear some feedback from their board to see if that would actually be, be available to the county. But anyway, I would like for y'all to consider that because it is, it is important. We had, we had two elections, we had election, we had one county commissioner only win by four votes. We had another one only win by 200. So each one of these votes counts. So I don't want to do, do anything to discourage people from going out and vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Judge, is your all number three?
That's what, I mean, I didn't see anything else besides three here, but.
I think that's what they're all speaking on is number three.
That's in. Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Honacki, live out in Curtain area, 5648 Hern Road. I agree with Mr. Vatul about the fact that there's 12% based on statistics, that 12% live in the rural part of the, of the county. And we're going to talk about disenfranchising these people, especially with the cost of gas getting where it is, and maybe taking upwards of an hour, hour and a half of someone's time to drive from Edge or somewhere further northeast to come into the closest polling area. Curtain would probably be a really good place for it. Just think that it's time to broaden who we, how we're trying to reach out to all of our voters, make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to vote and that we do not disenfranchise people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other citizen input? If it has to do with elections, number three would be the really appropriate place to have talked. But if I don't, so.
He's gonna call me.
Call me?
Yeah, he will.
He will.
Okay. Any, any other citizen in this portion of the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we will consider take action on Agenda Items 3 through 36. Number three is discuss and take action to approve early voting locations, hours, and of the November 20, 22nd general election.
Judge, I'd like to make an amendment to Agenda Item 3.
We have to have a motion to.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second.
I'd like to make an amendment to Agenda Item 3. I'm asking that we amend Agenda, Agenda Item 3 to include two polling places, two early voting places in each precinct. In my precinct, in Precinct 2, I would like for that early voting location to be at Curtain or Wixson Valley. I've got a letter here. I'm not going to read it, Judge, but I just say that there's another citizen that's a normal visitor, could not be here today. And he says he lives out in, in the Edge area, and it's a 30-mile round trip for him to go to Arena Hall. In addition to that, Judge, I'd like to change the first week of voting times to seven to seven. I'd like to add the MSC as another early voting location in Precinct 3. I'd like to add the Castle Heights Church in Precinct 4 as an additional early voting location. And I certainly would leave it to the discretion of Commissioner Aldridge, but I'm proposing that the additional voting location in Precinct 1 be in the South County, probably Milliken.
Yeah, my thought would be is, is, well, my thought would be is, is if we were looking for a location initially, that Welborn Community Center might be the appropriate one. As far as geographic location and a, I just think Milliken's a little too far to the south.
I, I'd like to make my motion to say that Welborn Community Center would be the additional polling location in Precinct 1.
So you're wanting to have an amendment that would add, do you know what the loca, I mean, we've got to know what the location is. We can't just say Curtain. So we've got to know what the polling location would be. I'm, you know.
Mr. Vatul stated that he is working with the Curtain Community Center. I actually believe that that would be a very desirable location for us because it doesn't interfere with church on Sunday, October 30th. So I'd like to, I'd like to propose, Judge, if we've already got a deal and, and the Elections Office has checked with Zion Church and they're willing to do it, Zion Church in Curtain is fine. If they've not checked with them, then I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we have it at the Curtain Community Center.
Okay. Well, typically you would have all this stuff lined up before you actually go to a vote.
I understand.
Because we're, we're fixing to set these locations. And if we set a location that isn't, that is not acceptable for whatever reason, or, or the, whoever the landlord there.
I proposed this amendment last week, Judge, and I believe the Elections Office has taken a week to confirm the locations that are, that are available.
Curtain Community Center? I don't, I don't remember that.
No, no. I'm saying if they have checked with Zion Church and Zion Church is available, I'll make that the, the motion then.
Okay. And your amendment includes seven to seven, did I hear that?
Yes, sir.
For the first week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I, now we'll open for discussion.
There isn't a second to that amendment.
Beg your pardon?
Nobody's made a second to that amendment.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second.
Okay. So we got a motion of second to make an amendment to?
I have an amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
I would like to offer that we vote separately on the time rather than to lump it all together because there are some things I can agree to. But I would not be able to take it all as proposed.
Okay. So I, I mean, I've got a motion of second to lump it all together. So maybe when we get to a vote, if that fails, then we could have another amendment to change whatever.
I didn't get a second.
I'll, I'll second. Ms. Colley's motion?
So my motion is second.
Okay. So a motion is second then to?
Let's talk about times.
Let's talk about times and, and act on that first.
Okay. So we got a motion of second.
Who's second?
Nancy.
So we've got some, some of the public that wants to come in and speak on number three, which is where we're at. Sherri Ellison.
I'm Sherri Ellison. I live in College Station 2705 Brookway Drive. And I'm coming, I worked at the university. And I know there's a need to have more places for so many people in such a small area to be able to get to vote. And I just wanted to support that particular position. Thank you.
Ms. Ellison, were you supporting the MSC?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm asking.
You've already spoken.
Yep.
Roy Flores.
He's already spoken.
Roy Flores, I'd like to talk about the, the times. Again, I, I asked this court last week to be consistent. Now, to me, that, that means if you want to have it from seven to seven, or seven to eight, or seven to nine, that's fine. The longer hours, I think, are better. And if we could get volunteers from these young people, that would help out immensely, I think, for everybody. But we need it, we need to look far down the future, not just each election. Every one of y'all, or, or most of y'all, have been in politics for at least a couple of decades. And y'all realize, if y'all don't know, y'all have somebody in your camp that knows which voting locations give you the most votes, whether they're Republican or Democrat. So y'all are already familiar with the process. Y'all know what locations are heavily Republican and heavily Democrat. That's why the, the Brazos Center has never been changed. Because y'all have a lot of Republican votes come there. And even though here, when the voting was, was here, I had to complain about not having "Vote Here" signs out on Texas Avenue. And I was told that, well, you know, it's, it's, it's a big problem. Well, it's funny because over at the Brazos Center, every year, some poor voting person has to go out all the way to, to 1179 or, or Briar Crest to put that "Vote Here" sign on the corner. It's not just directly in front of the building. So that, that doesn't make any sense unless it's done on purpose. Now, again, y'all have been in politics for a long time. So y'all know what's going on. And y'all know where the votes are and whether or not. So I would just like y'all to understand that we understand that, that y'all, y'all know what you're doing up there. And I, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
So since this is a number three and is a discussion area, I can respond.
Yes, sir, you can. Yes, sir. Please.
The Brazos Center is a county-owned facility. So we can, every time we vote or have an election, the county can decide that we're going to have that open and we're going to make that available. When you start doing it at other places, then you're at the mercy of whoever you're trying to rent to. That's why the Brazos Center has nothing to do with whether a Republican votes there or a Democrat votes there. It's because it's a county-owned facility. And it's very convenient for us to say, we're going to allow voting to happen there. So that's, that's the reason the Brazos Center is always a voting location.
And that's the same reason we have the McLeod Training Room.
Sure. Yeah.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah.
Because that brings up another subject. Now, years ago, places were moved. Now, again, when I was talking about this building right here, county does own this building. And so I had to complain about not having "Vote Here" signs here at this building. When it was moved to the other location, now this is the Brazos County Administrative Building. The other location, the old tax office, is called the Brazos County Election Administration Office, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. But when they moved it over there, they still had the voting location as here on the county website. And, and I believe I sent you the email with a copy of that. And again, had problems about not getting "Vote Here" signs on Texas Avenue, right there. So I understand it's county-owned. So y'all have no excuse when it's county-owned right here. Does, does that make sense?
Yes. But that is the Elections Administration Building, and that's where we typically try to have it. Now, if we had, during a presidential election, if we believed that there's going to be a huge volume of people come through, we have shifted it over here in the past because we didn't think that we could vote enough people through there. And so it may have shifted over here at some time or other.
Well, well, I hope y'all keep it there because there's plenty more parking over there. So it, when there are a lot of people, they have a lot more places to park. And, you know, if, if there are some long lines, well, that's good because we got voters going to vote. But again, these moving of locations here and there, closing down locations like Galilee Baptist Church, which is a large Democratic voting. Baptist Church, which is a large Democratic voting poll. And I believe everybody knows that. Everybody's known that for years. So we have to be consistent. And that's what I'm asking this, this court to be, is consistent, not only to the Republican and the Democrat, but the independent voters, to all voters. Because like I said before, it's not for this court's convenience, it's not for the workers' convenience, it's for the convenience of the voter. Thank you.
Oh, did you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Diana Davis.
My name is Diana Davis. I have been a polling judge for the last 12 years. And of those six, I have been responsible for recruiting workers for Election Day. I realize, I realize that all of us think it would be wonderful to have more polling places and more workers. But let me just explain to you the difficulties of getting workers to work on Election Day. Most of these people have other jobs that they have to get permission to be away from. They need to have, some of them well in advance to have the day off. Business owners that need to make arrangements for their business. We have, of course, got the childcare and many of them are actually responsible for parental care. And they have to reschedule appointments, meetings. We have professors who have to arrange for their classes. And this is for one day. And what I see happening is asking for additional workers on, in polling places during the early vote. I can see at least 25 new people that would need to be brought in, trained, make all of these arrangements. And I'm one that could be used. I'm retired. Balance issues aside, I'm in good health. I'm well-trained. I'm experienced. And I've had several sleepless nights considering the fact that I could not work early vote. Now, you have to remember, your seven to seven, 12-hour days are actually at least 13 hours, setting up the polls at the end of the day. And you're asking people to be trained. And we can't just put workers in these buildings. We simply cannot do that. It, the voters of Brazos County are entitled to, location is one aspect of the voting experience. But if they get in to a polling place and, and have a less-than-quality voting experience, that's not fair to the Brazos County voters. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lynn Strata.
Thank you, sir, Commissioners, for your service. I also want to thank Trudy and her staff for everything they do. They work so hard. If you've never run an election, and I've been doing it for over 40 years, you have no idea how much work goes into it. It's really a year-round job. And thank y'all for what you do. Well, we were quite shocked to hear last week that you were considering adding early voting locations. Want to point out, the City of Bryan already has a signed joint election agreement with Brazos County for the November election based on the premise of five early voting locations. That document is executed and has been approved by our City Council. We are concerned about the cost of adding the five early voting, four? Five. Four. Comes to per entity that will be participating in the election on November the 8th. To add those four, four early voting sites with extended hours will be $50,550 to each entity. That's more than my current election budget has in it. So there is a tremendous cost increase to your funding partners. And we were not consulted. I have not had the opportunity to discuss this with the entire City Council yet, but I have spoken to the mayor and the city manager, who indicated that certainly it's your decision. But they ask that we not be included in the cost of adding the additional polling places, as they don't see a lot of benefit to Bryan voters. And the fact that we have not been able to participate in the decision-making process as a funding partner. I have been instructed to pursue looking into the two cities, looking into purchasing our own equipment. The cost of these elections is getting so high to us that we are wondering if we could run our own elections at a better cost and value to the voters of our cities. Because it's a lot of money. I went to my CFO the other day and told him that if we, we needed to look at a runoff this year, which I feel certain we're going to have one. And when I told him what I thought it was going to cost, I thought I was going to have to call an ambulance to come get him. It's really gone up. I mean, you, you increase the cost of the rental of the voting machines to us from 2% to 4%. I get it. It's a lot of money. But when you use a piece of equipment for 12 days of early voting, that entity has paid 48% of the cost of that piece of equipment. So in two years, we've paid you for a cost of equipment. So that was a tremendous increase to us already. We don't pay our poll workers enough money as it is. It's very hard to get them. It's a long day. And it's a tiring day. And, and they don't do it for the money. I know that. But we need to let them know how much they're appreciated. I would like to, and I don't want to step on any of the party's toes. I don't want to do that. But the City of Bryan would be happy to launch a bilingual campaign to recruit election workers to work the November election. We're happy to help with that. But we've always been told, well, the parties pretty much provide us with the people. Well, I keep hearing there's a shortage of workers. Let us help. We're happy to help. We'll do it for free. We're happy to do it. We've got the resources to do it. In terms of using young people, I'm all for it. The City of Bryan has a youth advisory commission that's very active in, in the City of Bryan. They could recruit, as you know, we can already use student workers. We could find a lot of bilingual workers that way. So I think we need to get with our school districts and talk to them about some excused absences for these young people to have this opportunity. I do want to caution you that when you add polling places, that we make sure they're ADA compliant. That is required by law. And I'm not, I believe most of the ones that you proposed are, or all of them are. But I did just want you to know that, again, I haven't talked to the whole council, but the mayor and the city manager indicated a desire that we not be held responsible for funding the additional polling places since we did not know and we've already signed an election agreement with you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Strata.
And there-
Ms. Strata.
Yes.
I have a question. And you said in your conversations with the CFO, I don't know, did you have a discussion relative to extending hours during early voting and looking at the differential there compared to four additional locations?
We did. We're not so opposed to the additional hours. That's not as big of a cost. But to add the four locations is extremely costly to each entity.
Right.
But, so the additional hours, you know, knowing that we already have one week of seven to seven, we already have a Saturday, we already have a Sunday, we're not as opposed to that because the cost isn't as great.
Right.
My concern is y'all being able to get workers, and we certainly would like to help with that. But to add the four early voting locations and take an additional cost to each of your five funding entities to $50,550 each is a lot of money.
Would Bryan oppose us moving Arena Hall out to the center, more the, the center of Precinct Two? Is that, is that a problem?
I would like to discuss that with the entire City Council. I know Arena Hall has a lot of voters.
I think so, too.
There's a lot of people that-
But as you said, it, it really affects Bryan residents. I mean-
It does.
And, and it sort of precludes some people that live out in the far east county of being able to use it because of fuel cost and, and the distance there.
I would have to discuss-
You're aware of that. In other words, it's good for Bryan, but it's not very good for people that live out in the east county.
I understand. Yes, sir. I would have to ask them that question.
Yes, sir.
The one direction that I have so far is that they would never support closing Galilee ever.
Yeah.
For anything. Ever again.
Yes. Yeah.
That includes early voting and runoff elections.
They want to see Galilee open.
So that would leave two in Precinct Four. And I believe we were told last week that the statute says if we have two in one precinct, we've got to have two in all precincts.
That's correct.
Well, that's not exactly correct.
Nope.
It's precinct, there is a second in Precinct Four, but it's the Elections Administration Building, which would be-
It does not count.
It doesn't count.
Okay.
So Galilee would be the only one in Precinct Four.
We're just concerned about disenfranchising the voters around Galilee. It was my understanding that over 140 people showed up that day looking to vote, and it was closed. So-
They said almost 50 showed up in Curtain.
So we were, we were concerned about that, of course. And somehow, we got dragged into it, and I don't know how, because we have nothing to do with, with primaries and primary runoffs.
Right.
Thank you, Jesus, that we don't. But, but it was a, we did get a lot of complaints from voters in that area.
We like to share our experience.
Well, we, I so appreciate that, Commissioner Aldrich.
And I do thank you for making that distinction because I think there are two things amendment-wise that are under consideration here.
I think so.
So I wanted to get your input on that. And I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And so with Commissioner Colley's motion to divide the question into two, I think, I think we could maybe have a compromise here. So thank you.
Thank you.
May I follow up?
Sure.
I'm Karen McQueen, County Clerk. And I just wanted to follow up with a couple of things I thought of relative to what Mary Lynn was talking about. The cost of running the election, if, and I don't know if anybody's thought of this, if the cities get their own equipment, they may or may not go with heart. They may be voting on a totally different system. So that's not consistent for the voter. They'll have two early voting clerks. So since 2008, I believe it was 2008, we'd done one ballot, federal, all the way down, city, school. If the city splits off, our voters are not going to have a one-stop-shop for one ballot. They're going to have to go vote federal, county, state. Then they're going to have to go to the city and vote the city and school. Same thing with early vote. They're going to have two places to send applications, Trudy and the city. So when I was doing voting, the majority of our ballot by mail is 65 and older. So you can imagine they get two envelopes, and the envelopes are exactly the same because the state prescribes them, voting two ballots and making sure they get those ballots back into the correct envelopes to go to the correct early voting clerks. And the early voting clerks are not going to know because they don't open them. They pass them on to the ballot board. So what happens to those ballots? Do they get thrown out? Are our cities and county going to be driving the road? So it's just some things I thought of while all this has been going on, is we want to make it convenient. Well, we need to be convenient across the board so our voters are not confused as to where we, or where they need to go to vote. And another thing is the cities have not applied for vote centers. That's just the county. So until they go through that process, the voters would be polling place precinct specific. They can't go over by Walmart because they're shopping or wherever. They're going to have a hard time finding where they need to go. So just some food for thought. I woke up at 3:00 AM one morning thinking, okay, this, this, to me, doesn't, it makes it more complicated for the voters to get their ballot. So that's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you.
Yes. And I agree. Thank you, Karen.
Tanya Smith.
Tanya Smith, the City of College Station City Secretary. I first want to thank y'all for letting me speak and also to let y'all know that this is a wonderful group of people here. They do an amazing job. I'm here because we are not in support of adding an additional four polling locations. But with that cost increase, additional to what we're already paying, the $50,000, I want y'all to think about, some entities are able to cancel their election each year if they do not have, if they only have one person running and, and whatnot. So that cost will increase. So if we only, right now, if there's five entities running in an election, it's the $50,000. If you go down to four entities, that, each entity will have to pay almost $52,000. And then if you have only three entities running in an election, you're, you're jumping up to an extra $68,000. So for College Station, we are not in support of adding that. I have talked to our mayor, and he agrees as well. I have not got to talk to the whole council, but, but yes, that's what, where we're standing. And we are not budgeted for it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Norfusell.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. Being familiar with the process, some of the items I'm going to say are for your benefit to share with you. But I also know this is an opportunity also for citizens to hear spoken what some of us would experience in the process, just casually know. Very concerned about what I've heard today and some of the possibilities with the partners. I'd like to remind everybody listening, as has already been mentioned, that this, running elections is a continuous process. And what it seems to me, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of comments, but I, I wonder if people have read the election code, if people have looked into the countywide methodology that was adopted by the county years ago, if people have even spoken to election workers. There's a lot of experience, process, and law that goes into running elections. So we would appreciate any assistance in recruiting volunteers. But let me again remind you, this is not just about filling a seat during the day. This is why I, as Republican Party Chairman, and my counterpart, Amy Alge, Democrat Party Chairman, work together. This is not partisan. This is about making sure it is fair and for everybody, and that every voter feels that their vote counts. So when it comes to locations, let me be clear, and election admins and the Commissioners have already spoken to this. There's election code that goes to which locations are picked according to our countywide methodology, according to which buildings can be used, whether they're accessible, whether they can be secured. And when I say accessible, I also mean ADA accessible, whether contracts can be maintained. This is not done haphazardly or in some way to benefit one party or the other. When it comes to volunteers, as I was saying, this too is a serious job. So I appreciate, I'm open to, to recruiting. But again, it's not about filling a seat. You need to be knowledgeable about the code and the law. There are even specific clothing that you cannot wear. And so it also means that you cannot speak to certain issues. You have to also know how to be conflict resolution when people aren't happy, when they're given misinformation and walk into a place and believe they can vote when they don't have either the proper paperwork or they can't be found on the rolls. So it's a very serious position that needs knowledgeable volunteers, committed volunteers, which we already have and we need more of. Lastly, I'm going to wrap up. I'm just a little concerned. To me, this, a lot of this also seems to be a last-minute knee-jerk reaction to, to something that, that maybe, what was it? This, this runoff did not happen for some of us as we would have preferred with the voting locations being open. But I'm especially concerned that funding partners have not been consulted, that that might strain the relationship, that as we've heard from Mrs. McQueen, that we are just starting a ball rolling. If, what we've heard could happen, that will make something much more difficult for voters if all of a sudden we, we have a split. It's not about money in the sense that we don't think elections are important. But along with that relationship with funding partners, if we and you are considered to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, let's remember that all of this was planned on a budget. on a budget with certain expectations, that not everybody can shift at the last minute. And I think people listening need to also understand that, that whatever decision comes from the dais today, whether you're happy with it or not, and as much as we like to say we'll do anything for voters and voting locations, there is that layer to it as well, of maybe not being able to pivot if that's what y'all decide. I don't know. But just a reminder to everybody of all the factors that come into play. Thank you for your time and your work, and thank you to the admin office as well, and to the volunteers that I see here, the election workers and judges that are here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Nichols?
Good morning. I'm Carol Nichols, and I live at sixty-two fifty Zweifel Road. So I live out in the rural area that y'all have been talking about. I am also an election worker. I'm the...have been the judge, the election judge out at Curtain Zion Church since about twenty-fourteen. We get people from all over. There's not just people that come from that area. We get people that are driving in town, that are working out there. So I don't have a problem with that location being open at all. I also don't have a problem with us being consistent with the early voting weeks, the hours. I think that's a great thing. I've heard a lot of problems with adding four more locations, however. One thing I do want to make y'all aware of, nobody has said this, but you know, we added new voting machines. I think the people really like it, because we get a paper copy of the ballot. But with that comes additional workers. Now, I want to tell you some things that happened to me out at Curtain. The last time that Curtain was open on primary day, I was down to...I only had three people, because a couple of people didn't show up. So just as Eleanor has pointed out, it's not just getting somebody to fill a place. They'll say they come, and then they don't show up. What also happened was my alternate judge got sick, and he had to leave, and luckily, we found somebody to take his place. Had we not done that, we'd only had two people. I don't think we...by law, we could keep that location open. Getting workers is important, but we need people who are dependable. A lot of times, young people get conflicts at the last minute. I'm not against having young people who commit to doing it. Don't get me wrong there, because I think...I agree that we need to train up younger people. But it's very important to understand, we really need six people at each location. Might could get away with five, but even if you have two hundred people show up, you still have to watch, because now, we have the scanner, as well as we have to have somebody monitor that door, because you don't know how many people we catch, and some that we don't. At other locations, we've not caught people walking out with that ballot. Then their vote does not get counted. So we've disenfranchised voters, and I really believe that you guys are trying to do the right thing. In fact, we voted y'all to do the right thing and to make the right decisions, and we can hold you accountable when we don't agree with you. It should be, any of these locations that are decided on, and what you decide on the hours, it's y'all's decision, and then we can...the voters and the residents can hold y'all accountable for that. It's nobody else's. But I thank you for your time, and I just wanted you to think about that. One other thing, we do have people who work. These gals, when they're working, early vote, Election Day, y'all don't see all the work that they do. I do. I call them a hundred times sometimes during the day, when I'm a judge, asking them questions, so I can qualify a voter. And one other thing, when I'm a judge, and the other people, I have many friends who have volunteered to work these elections. When we're there working, we're not Democrat, we're not Republican, we're there for the voters. I help anybody. I've helped people who couldn't see and couldn't hear vote. And I've, you know, it doesn't matter to me what party. I'm there to make sure I qualify voters and get them to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mike Sutherland?
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. I was gonna make a short speech, but I'm lost right now. First of all, what's the motion?
There's a motion to approve the...what has been proposed, and then there's an amendment. Now, it's been...there's two amendments, actually, now. One would be to approve the hours being consistent seventy-seven, and the other would be to add four...
Four locations?
Yes.
Including Curtain and MSC. Okay, I think I'm with you now. You know, there's a lot of reasons that people have spoken about, about having the polls open, but as has already been done, I was gonna recommend that you add Curtain and the MSC, at least the MSC and Curtain, because you've already picked up Galilee or the other church that was closed. What was it? Yeah, Galilee was closed before. So that's a good thing. I think, but there's some guiding principles, I think, we all are agreed to, is that we have to make voting accessible to everybody, the same way, no matter what your station in life, because from the resident to the president, the vote all counts the same, unless in some way you diminish the ability for people to get to the polling places. And that's what...I think that's what you're working on, but I think it needs to be clear that, like Curtain seems to be very unserved in terms of being able to vote out there, in terms of the distances. And then the new thing is that there's fifty thousand dollars added for four new voting places, so that means the voting cost total for the five entities is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I was told that the normal vote only costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think maybe you should postpone what's going on here to make sure that the numbers are found out to be true, because if the city does their own election, and I don't think they got a problem with money, because both cities have over a four-hundred-million-dollar budget, some five-hundred-million dollars, so there's gotta be fifty thousand dollars in there somewhere. But in any case, you need to figure out exactly what's gonna happen if they pull out, and how much that's gonna cost, just like you've already...you maybe already know that, but the cost need to be identified. But I don't think the cost is a factor. I think people being able to get to the polling places is the only factor to be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Brandon Gaines?
Yeah.
Okay. Arianna Marion?
Hello. I am a student and a student senator here at Texas A&amp;M, and I would like today to speak on behalf of some of my classmates who are unable to be here because of the summer break. So...
Could you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Do you need me to repeat that? Okay, I'm a student here at Texas A&amp;M and a student senator, and so I would like today to speak on behalf of some of my classmates who are not able to be here, because they're out of town and on internships. So moving the voting from the MSC would disenfranchise a lot of the voters. Some of the students who live on campus aren't from anywhere near here, so they don't have the ability to drive six-plus hours to go back home to vote. And so, as well as those without vehicles who can't make it all the way down here to the county clerk...to the county courthouse in order to vote, or like the campus workers who aren't students, the ones who could easily go to the MSC when they have a break for lunch, or the professors in between classes. And so, I was also asked by a friend to read their testimony, so that is what I would like to do. "As a full-time student at Texas A&amp;M, I visit campus almost daily. I go to Zachary and Thompson for engineering classes, Evans for late-night finals cramming, and the MSC for anything textbook, from textbooks to spinstone. I don't, however, go often to the Bryan Courthouse or City Hall. MSC has easily...has been an easily accessible and reliable polling place since I started attending A&amp;M. Why change that now? For many students, this polling spot allows them to participate in their democratic process despite a demanding schedule, not to mention saving on expensive gas by taking a bus to and from campus instead of driving all the way downtown. With all of this in mind, I ask you to reconsider your decision on the MSC as a polling place." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? That's all the...
I think he's already addressed us.
Yeah.
I think you've already addressed us on this issue.
Yes, I know, and since they brought up some other issues, I just wanted to touch base on those.
No, you've already had...sorry, Lori.
Well, thank you very much.
Judge, if we're in discussion, what I would tell the commissioners is that I think the MSC is important. I'm convinced that it's important. I'm also convinced that Curtain is important. I'm not sure these other two locations are even important to the commissioners in those locations. I would be willing to further amend and just ask that the polling place in precinct two be moved to Curtain from Arena Hall. In other words, I'm willing to close Arena Hall, and we keep one polling place. I don't know if that would satisfy the needs of the City of Bryan. I think they made it clear that they only want polling places in Bryan. I don't know what we'd do with the MSC. Commissioner, that's your area.
Yep. Well, I wonder, in your precinct, about the people in Traditions, how long...how far they would have to drive to go to Curtain?
They're closer to College Station or to election headquarters than they would be even to Arena Hall. Arena Hall is inconvenient if you live in Traditions. In fact, I'm willing to go out on a limb and suggest to you, I don't think there are very many people that live in Traditions, unless they work over near Arena Hall, that would use that as their primary voting location.
But the wonderful thing, Commissioner, is that we use centers now, voting centers, so they don't...they're not necessarily assigned to any certain voting center. So, you know, we need to consider that.
Commissioner, back when we did have to vote in our precinct, it was actually more convenient to people that lived in east county than it is now. It hurt those people. So in other words, yes, we're helping the city voters tremendously, but in my opinion, I think we're hurting the people out in the county.
But you could only vote not only at your home location, you could vote on Election Day. Now, we got two weeks ahead of time, which makes it...
No, it's better. I agree.
I think we're...I mean, I'm very happy that the state allowed us to do what we've done.
Early voting, yeah.
I think it has improved the opportunity to go vote.
Yep.
Trudy?
Good morning, Court. I did follow up with the locations that were recommended last week. I spoke with Castle Heights last week, Mr. Mooreing, Pastor Mooreing, and he said that he really needs to talk to his congregation, since I explained to him that they would not be able to use that portion of the facility at all, that it would have to stay locked the entire two weeks. I was not able to reach him this morning. I talked to Zion Church, and they said that they are unable to make accommodations for us for two weeks. Milliken said they are agreeable at seven hundred and fifty dollars for the two weeks, and then what...I mean, MSC is already available if we're out to use that. One thing that hasn't been talked about, and that I really put out of my mind until over the weekend when I was thinking about it, is that we haven't talked about if we have the equipment necessary to be able to do this. I'm all for adding locations if that's what the court wants, but we need to do it in the proper manner, and we need to make sure that we are properly ready to add places. We do have enough election equipment, voting machines, for the people to be able to vote on, but we do not have adequate supply of poll pads to get people checked in. I figured out the equipment needs that we would have for adding the four additional places, and if we add four additional places, that's only gonna leave us two spare poll books for in case we have problems. That is not near enough for backups in case there is issues. That would mean if we had a poll pad go down somewhere...